Good morning and a very happy new year to all. It's nine AM and I called the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of January ten, twenty twenty four to order. We are meeting in the San Mateo County Board Chambers as well as via Zoom. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance. I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the road call.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Juan? Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Gupta?
Here.
And staff is represented by Manowitz, Fox, and Gonzales. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open public comments for items on consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the anteroom. On Zoom, please use a raise hand feature or star nine if you're calling by phone. And Madam Chair, we have no one wishing to speak in chambers or on Zoom. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So we'll now close the public comments for items that are not on the agenda and not on consent agenda. So we have the minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with the road call.
That was a motion by Commissioner Ketchum and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
So we now move on to item two. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the plan.
Owner: State of California. Applicant: California Department of Parks and Recreation. File number PLN two zero two one dash zero zero four five three. Location: Año Nuevo State Park, Pescadero. APN zero eight nine dash two three zero dash four seven zero. And for the record to reflect that Commissioner Serrano Juan has joined us. Thank you. And your project planner for this item is Luis Topete.
So good morning again for the record. My name is Luis Topete with the San Mateo County Planning and Building. And item number two is consideration of a coastal development permit for improvements to the staging area of the Año Nuevo State Park for a removal and replacement of an existing interpretive structure and restroom. Installation of two benches, new underground propane line, and expansion of a fire truck turnaround at Año Nuevo State Park in the unincorporated Pescadero area of San Mateo County. So the improvements that are proposed include removal and replacement of an existing interpretive structure and restroom. Installation of two benches, a new underground propane line, and expansion of a fire truck turnaround. And the project site is located on the west side of Highway one, approximately three quarters of a mile west from the parking lot for the Año Nuevo Point Trail. Here's a drawing of the existing site plan. The interpretive structure to be removed and replaced is shown in orange. And the existing restroom to be removed and replaced is shown in red. And here's a zoomed-in site plan of the existing interpretive structure located at the intersection of four trails. And the staging area serves as a welcome station to the Año Nuevo Coast Natural Preserve. And here's a floor plan of the existing eighty-one square foot restroom facility that's comprised of two portable restroom units within a wooden shed. And the existing two hundred and six square foot interpretive structure comprised of a storage room, covered exhibit space, which is also referred to as a staging area, display table, and wooden deck. And these elevation drawings show the existing interpretive structure from all four directions, and the structure is approximately eleven feet tall at its highest point. And these photographs show the interpretive structure from all four directions. The structure was built in nineteen eighty-eight. It has substantially aged and is in need of repairs to better serve the park and its visitors. And when occupied by park staff or docent volunteers, the staging area provides hands-on interpretive items along with information from the staff and docents. And these pictures are from inside the staging area looking north and also looking south. And these elevation drawings show the existing restroom facility from all four directions. And the structure is approximately ten feet, two inches, ten feet, two inches tall at its highest point. And these photographs show the existing restrooms from all four directions. And here's a photograph from inside the shed that houses the porta potties. And here's a drawing of the proposed site plan. The new interpretive structure is shown in orange. And the new restroom is shown in red. The new three hundred and fifty-foot propane line to be installed underground from the existing tank behind the docent building to the interpretive structure is shown in blue. And this will involve approximately twenty-six cubic yards of grade. And the expansion of the existing fire truck turnaround is shown in yellow, and the two new ADA benches north of the interpretive structure are highlighted in orange. And here's a zoomed-in site plan of the new interpretive structure. The new structure will expand the covered exhibit area to allow visitor groups of up to twenty people. And this is the standard size of their guided tours. And it'll allow them to assemble in a sheltered location, and the new office and storage area will provide space to securely store interpretive items that are used for the hands-on display by park staff and docents. And the display area will be expanded to provide more space for interpretive items and to protect visitors engaging with the display tables and extended roof section is being proposed. And two existing pine trees that are shown in green are proposed for removal. And here's a photograph of both pine trees proposed for removal. The twenty-inch tree on the left broke after the design of this project was completed. It's kind of hard to see there with the sun shining through, but it's broken off. And only a portion of the trunk remains, and the thirty-two-inch tree on the right could present any hazard to the new facility due to its proximity. So removal is proposed. And here's the existing path of travel from the interpretive structure to the restrooms. And this is also the location where the new propane line will be installed underground. And here's a floor plan of the proposed one hundred and fourteen square foot precast concrete restroom comprised of two vault toilets and the new four hundred and eighty-three square foot interpretive structure comprised of a storage room, covered exhibit, meeting area, display table, two stone benches, and the extended roof cover. And these elevation drawings show the new interpretive structure from all four directions. The structure will be approximately fourteen feet tall at its highest point. And the improvements will offer a facility for volunteers and staff to provide general park orientation. And it will also serve to create a structured and identifiable entrance to the natural preserve. And these elevation drawings show the new restroom facility from all four directions. The structure will be twelve feet tall at its highest point of the roof and roughly fifteen feet, two and a half inches tall at the highest point of the vent pipes. And the newer and more modern restrooms will better accommodate the visitors and also park staff. And the project, as described in the application and accompanying materials and as condition, conforms with the plan's policies, requirements, and standards of the San Mateo Local Coastal Program. And with regards to the applicable local coastal program components that are listed here. And the supporting analysis is found in Section eight-two of the staff report. And the project site is in the Planned Agricultural District and Coastal Development Combining District. And the project was bound to comply with the provisions of the Planned Agricultural District. And a detailed explanation of the project's compliance with the applicable zone district is detailed in Section eight-three, the staff report. So California State Parks acting as lead agency filed a notice of exemption for this project on August fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And the California State Parks determined that all project activities proposed under this coastal development permit are categorically exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act per CEQA Guideline Section fifteen, three oh one, three oh two, three oh three, and three oh four. And SAPP's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit identified as county file number PLN two zero two one dash zero zero four five three by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval that are contained in attachment aid. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff?
No questions.
No question?
Oh, very thorough.
Commissioners?
Yeah, excellent presentation. No questions.
Very good presentation. Thank you. I had a couple of questions. So during the construction, it said it would take about a year to complete the construction. Is that true? Is that the estimate?
Yes, that is correct. And we do have a representative of state parks on Zoom. And they may be able to give a little bit more explanation in regards to that as well.
Okay, okay. And, okay, let me see if the other questions are. For, like, another question is, how is this propane used for? What is propane used for on this park?
I believe it's going to be, the propane currently is used for the docent building. But the reason the line has been extended to the new interpretive structure is for the heater.
For the heater, okay. Okay. Thank, thank you. So did anybody have questions for the staff? Okay, so, so my question is for the staff. Who is here from the staff?
One second, Madam Chair. The staff declined my invitation to join us panelists. So give me one second so I can ask them again. Okay, we have Linda Hitchcock with us. Linda, you're on.
I'm sorry. I'm Linda Hitchcock. I'm the Senior Park and Rec Specialist for California State Parks, and I'm representing the Año Nuevo project. The reason that we have asked for a year for construction is that it is, the actual construction of the building, the staging area, should only take about two to three months. We've had trouble getting the restroom components just because there's a backlog of trying to get the concrete restrooms. So it's more of a supply delay than, the actual construction should only take about two to three months, but we asked for a year because it takes a long time to order the restrooms.
Okay, okay. So, so is, would the park be closed during that period?
Oh, no. The busy season for Año Nuevo is the wintertime, and so it's a slow season during the summer. And we would do the construction hopefully between May and September, and the park would remain open. They could just walk right around it.
Okay. And they would still have access to a restroom at that time?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we wouldn't remove, we will not remove the chemical toilets. We would just, you know, move them out of the area where we're going to put them. But we also have restrooms at the beginning of this trail as well that are, but it's not right at the site. But yeah, we wouldn't remove this restroom, the chemical toilets until the new restroom's in place.
Okay. Yeah, no, I really, I think it's, it's, it's a very good thing because as I was going through the history of the, of this park, nothing has been upgraded since many, many years ago, since nineteen eighty-eight is the last time I was looking at it. So this, this is a.
It's in need.
Yes, it's definitely in need of this. So there's a cost for the restroom in there. But the rest of it must be costing quite a bit too, but I didn't see.
We actually have a donor who has contributed a large amount of money that's being held by the Coastside State Park Association to pay for the staging area construction. So that, that has been raised by fundraising and largely from a large donor that contributed, hoping to get this project done. So we actually have the funding for that, and then our Coastside State Park Association is raising the money for the restroom.
Okay. Great, great. Yeah, no, I do not have any further questions. And the commissioners do. Thank you, thank you. Hitchcock, okay. So at this time, I would like to open it for the public. So do we have any? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff did not receive any written correspondence for this item. And at this time, there is nobody wishing to speak for item two. Thank you.
So in that case, we'll close the public comments. And if commissioners have anything they would like to discuss or if they would like to proceed with the motion?
No, I think it's straightforward, and I'd be happy to make a motion for a recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit to the county file number PLN twenty twenty-one four hundred and fifty-three by adopting the required findings, excuse me, and conditions of approval contained in an attachment aid.
Second.
Please proceed with the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Ketchum. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Congratulations. We move on to item three, which is correspondence and other matters.
Thank you, Chair Gupta. I don't have any correspondence to report. I would like to just make a quick comment regarding the last item, and that is that if you have not been to Año Nuevo State Park, I strongly encourage it. Maybe I mentioned this last time. It's near and dear to my heart and is a very special place. And to get to see the elephant seals is really a once-in-a-lifetime experience, so I'd definitely encourage that. So getting back to the agenda, no correspondence to report. Moving on to the next meeting, we do not have a study session planned. We do have two coastal development permits that will be coming before the Planning Commission. One is for a new garage with an accessory dwelling unit on top at eight thirty-six Park Avenue in Moss Beach. Another is for a new single-family residence on a bluff-top location located at eight three two two Cabrillo Highway. This is a demolition and a rebuild of an existing home in Montero.
Next, we have to that.
Yes, I wanted to let you know that on December fifteenth, the Coastal Commission approved our LCP amendment for the Pescadero Fire Station and Waterline Extension. They did require that the county accept certain modifications to that amendment in order for it to be effective. Our recommendation that the Board of Supervisors accept those modifications will be on the Board of Supervisors' agenda of January twenty-third. And the coastal development permits for those two projects will quickly follow on the heels of that and be presented to the Planning Commission in February.
And it doesn't have to go back to anybody else after that?
What happens is, once the board accepts the modifications, we transmit that acceptance to the Coastal Commission. The executive director of the Coastal Commission needs to determine that the action was legally adequate and report that to the Coastal Commission. And so I expect that that will occur at the Coastal Commission meeting in February. So board accepts in January, we submit it to the commission staff, and then the commission determines that it's legally adequate in February. And then we're back before you with the permits for the two projects soon after the commission's acceptance. They were clearly supportive of the waterline extension project. They identified it as an environmental justice issue, and they issue, and they express their concern and their desire that the county act promptly to get clean water to the students at the high school, which is what we intend to do.
Yeah. Your recommendation, I did, did go, did attend that on Zoom.
Oh.
And it was, it was interesting, very, very nicely run. I really liked it. And, and there was quite a big presence from county.
Yes, there was. For our item, there was a number of speakers from Puente who spoke on behalf of the need for the waterline extension. There was really no opposition to the project, although the Farm Bureau did call in and raise some questions and some concerns. But yeah, for the most part, it was support for the project. And there were some interesting items prior to that. I don't know if you caught some of the federal consistency action items involving actions at Vandenberg Air Force Base in terms of launching
Right, yeah.
certain test missiles. So always an interesting discussion.
It was, but this came much later.
Much later, right. It was a longer day than we had anticipated, but it was a good result. Just continuing on the director's report, I wanted to let you know also at the January twenty-third Board of Supervisors' meeting we'll be presenting an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a single-family residential development in Emerald Lake Hills. This is a Fred Herring design at five seventy Live Oak Lane. And at the hearing here, I think the neighbor expressed concerns about the design, and they decided to appeal that to the board. So that will be considered on January twenty-third. And then, given that this is the new year, I and we, I want to let you know that we've got the long-range work plan on the radar to get to you as soon as possible so you can review and comment on our priorities for the upcoming year when it comes to our long-range planning efforts. So I don't have a specific hearing date for you right now, but I'm working with Barat to make sure that happens as soon as possible. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I have some. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
The Airport Street propane facility. So the CDP final approval was in November twenty-two. And the deadline for the fence replacement was required within sixty days of that. And so we're now one year past that deadline. And so I am, I understood it was for sale. I don't know if it's still for sale. I don't know what's going on. They do keep the vegetation mode with the exception of the pampas grass leaning over the nearby resident's house. But my, my question is, it's sort of entwined in a larger issue. There, there used to be, and maybe there still is, a Princeton Code Enforcement Task Force. Does that still exist?
I am not aware that they've been meeting recently. I could be wrong, but I think that, to my knowledge, they have not been meeting since COVID.
Well, I, I asked because I don't know how to, where to turn for my concerns. I no longer have the email address of the sheriff, the leader of the sheriff. I used to be able to just reach out to him. The, I don't understand what the current policy is along Airport Street in regard to abandoned vehicles and people living in their vehicles. It would seem to be, there seems to be a shift where that is completely ignored. And I don't mean this to be a statement advocating solutions for the homeless issue. My concern is the abandoned vehicles, the garbage, and that sort of thing. And the I don't, I don't know, I don't know what to do with all, oh, and the other thing is, as far as the propane yard goes, they have a portion where they, where their entrance is, which the fence curves in, so they could drive in and not be in the street before they go through their gate. Well, that area now is completely filled with a large RV and five automobiles, connect, presumably connected with that RV, blocking the whole area. And, and I don't know. What's to be done?
Yeah, I appreciate your concern about the issue, and I will reach out to the sheriff's office to collaborate on what we can do, especially with regard to abandoned vehicles, illegally parked vehicles. We have been trying to work with the current owner of the facility to deal with the fence. It's been very difficult. We'll continue those efforts, and I think I can escalate this to our larger code compliance task force to figure out if we don't get timely response, what's our next step going to be? And I'll be happy to share that with you.
The couple more points. I just remembered, the fence around the propane yard has two gaps now where the cyclone fence fabric has been unfastened from the pole. And one of them is, so someone can crawl through. One of them is right behind that RV, so you can't see the hole from the street. And the other one is around on the side where the gate was sagging. That's been sort of widened out, so I don't know what's going on with that. And if there is, I have pictures that occasionally, like, that can just clearly point to an issue if I know who to send them to. Currently, I burden Summer for listening with this. If there's someone else I should be reaching out to.
Well, Tim Sullivan is our code compliance manager, and I'm sure Summer is sharing this information with Tim. But I think it would be appropriate for you to include him on those pieces of correspondence. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. So we move on to item seven, which is twenty twenty-four Planning Commission election of chair and vice chair nominations.
Is that time again?
Go ahead.
Who's the current vice chair? Well, nominate Lisa.
I second that.
So, so you nominated and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So please proceed with the roll call.
Thank you. So that was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Ramirez to appoint Commissioner Ketchum as twenty twenty-four chair. So Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you. Your motion carries.
And if I may nominate Mr. Serrano Juan to be the vice president?
I second. Please proceed.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Gupta to nominate Commissioner Serrano Juan as vice chair. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
So much pressure.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta? Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay.
Congratulations.
So we have new. So we have new chair and vice chair.
Congratulations.
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 So we had, we had a good year. This last year was a good year. We went through a lot. We switched from, from a COVID situation to to a in-person situation. And and we, we have a good set of staff here with us, uh, at Madam Clerk.
We did a wonderful job.
Thank you, look, thank you.
Yes, and thanks to you, Chair Gupta, for leading the commission over this past year.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It was, it was a great year.
Very good.
And thank you.
Thank you for always being here, so the vice chair did not even have to do that.
Our vice chair is great. We, we've experienced your leadership. Best. Thank you. So if we have nothing, no others for the questions, the meeting is adjourned.